All right, if you're ready. We're going to call this meeting to order at 6:06. This is an informational meeting regarding the vote for the upcoming vote on November 2nd. I am going to turn the meeting over to Mike McLean, the town moderator.
Thank you, Beth. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, school board. My name is Mike McLean. I'm the town moderator and school moderator. So, thank you for the invitation to moderate this meeting. And thank you to everybody who came out tonight in the rain. There's materials for those of you who are in this gymnasium. There are materials at the entrance. If you haven't picked those up, you can pick those up and please sign in at the entrance. And for those of us on Zoom, if you could please identify yourself if you want to speak, but we need your name for the official minutes for the meeting. So, there's a couple of people on the Zoom meeting that I can see who are not identified. So, if you could just identify yourself, that would be great. And so, we're here tonight. I'm going to read the warning that was posted at the beginning of this month. The legal voters of the town of Wyndham are hereby noticed and warned to meet at the meeting house in Wyndham, Vermont on Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021, between 10:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. to transact the following business by Australian ballot. Everybody hear me? Okay. Article 1, shall the Wyndham Elementary School be closed and all educational operations at that location be terminated at the end of the 2021-2022 school year, and shall the voters authorize the Board of School Directors to provide for the education of the school districts pre-K through six pupils by paying tuition in accordance with 16 VSA Section 21A1. Said persons and legal voters of the Wyndham School District are further notified that voter qualification, registration, and absentee voting relative to said annual meetings should be provided in Chapters 43, 51, and 55 of Title 17 Vermont Statutes annotated. Informational hearing. Said persons and voters are further notified and warned of a public informational hearing on Tuesday, October 26th, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. at the Wyndham Elementary School. Pursuant to 17 VSA Section 2680G, the informational hearing is to discuss and provide voters' information on Article 1. Voters and interested persons can attend the hearing in person or may access and participate in the hearing remotely. And so, the way I'd like to run this meeting, if the body agrees, is to limit discussions to five minutes per person, comments to five minutes, public comments to five minutes per person. And I'll do my best to identify people in the room and on the Zoom in order. So, if the body agrees, then I think we can begin the meeting. So, I'd like to open the floor up to any comments. And one more thing, I am going to ask that everybody remain cordial and polite, and we operate in a civil discourse with each other. So, I'm not going to allow any ad hominem attacks against anybody in the room or of the body. So, with that being said, I'd like to open the floor up for discussion. Any comments? Yes, Eric, would you identify yourself?
I'm Eric Malakowski. Moved into town. I like the nice school. I don't see how everybody thinks there's more opportunity than we have with this school. We're so lucky to have this school. It's our school. We can make it what we want. Now, for all these people that think there's a big opportunity busing our kids somewhere else, putting them in classes with 20 to 30 people, they don't care about our children's education, the way I see it. They really don't. I mean, we have such a great school here. Our kids learn. I mean, my son's very bright. He learns, comes home, tells me new stuff all the time. All these children here get a great education. I see not any good in busing our kids out of our town. That's our school. We make it what we want. A lot of these people that are voting to close this school don't even have children in it. They don't have any interest in our kids' education that they're getting here. I mean, it just baffles me. They just don't care. I mean, I don't see how opportunity is putting our children in classes with 20 to 30 kids in it, you know, busing them. Like, how do we get our kids to school next? We're really going to leave them down on Route 30? Because that's what I was told once before. Our five-year-olds are going to get dropped off on Route 30 or Route 11 and have to wait for another bus. My child, if this does happen when they're closing, I'm going to demand that there's a bus that brings my kid all the way to school. It's going to cost whatever it costs, but that's fair to our kids. They shouldn't have to sit down on Route 30 and wait for a school bus to pick them up, a five, six, seven, eight-year-old. How does that make any sense? Would anybody let their children just sit on Route 30 at that age? In my mind, that baffles me that that is an answer. I mean, that's just ridiculous. I mean, I'm sure I'll have more to say, but that's what I figured I'd start with. I just don't see any opportunity in closing this school. It's the worst word they ever could have chose for their statement. I mean, there's no opportunity in that. I mean, some people just, I just don't get it. Makes no sense. I mean, they're not thinking of the people's education, our children's education at all. I guess that's all I've really got to say right now.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. Is there anybody on the Zoom meeting who has something they would like to discuss? Can they raise their hand, Bill? Is that how you do it?
Yeah.
Who are the iPhone people?
I don't know.
Can they identify themselves? The iPhone people, people with just your first name, could you please identify yourselves for Mike McLean? Why don't we start at the top here? iPhone next to Sarah Pack. I don't know if they're seeing the same thing.
No questions on the Zoom, so you have the floor. Do you want to stand up because the people on Zoom may not be able to hear you?
Oh, that's true. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Did everybody hear Eric Malakowski before?
Of course.
Maureen Bell has suggested that it's hard for people on Zoom to hear people in the crowd. If you could come up, there's a microphone here, this cylinder thing on a very treasured piece of furniture.
Hey, I'm a couple coming up.
Okay. That's fine.
My name is Supri. Eric, my daughter went to this school.
Yeah.
She lived in this town. She moved out so her daughter could go to Flipper. There were not 30 kids in a class. If there is a large group, they break it in two.
This 20 is three?
No, there were like 12.
Okay.
So, like, there's two first grades, there's two second grades. And she has had so much opportunity. She's been in French class since kindergarten.
Okay.
There's music, there's sports.
In an elementary school, there's sports?
Yes. Here, when my girls went here, we wanted to play sports like basketball. We went down to Jamaica to have the numbers, to have the kids. But the numbers just aren't here for those sports.
The education our kids are getting is amazing. It's amazing.
Can we keep the comments to the moderator?
Well, I thought we were recording.
Okay. I just wanted to share that with them. It's not a class of 30 kids, they break them up.
I had a different number, two hundred. I didn't understand.
Sure.
Russ, you need to stay civil, and if you can't, then I'll have a discussion with Mike. So, I'm sorry, Michael. So, it sounds like there's a discrepancy about class size in Floodbrook. Anybody in the room have any idea what that might be? Because we can't just keep having this conversation based on he said, she said.
I didn't say Floodbrook.
I'm sorry. Another school. I'm sorry, Eric, you're right.
My granddaughter goes there, I know.
And it's how many children in a class?
12.
12, okay. And that's at Floodbrook?
Yes.
Okay.
If there's so many, they break it in two.
Floodbrook has nothing to do with this conversation, you know, because our school has nothing to do with Floodbrook. We're not going that way. We're not in that school district.
Okay.
Floodbrook, right? And I mean, I'm just...
So, let's direct comments to the moderator. We're not going to have discussions between...
I'm sorry, I thought Floodbrook was an option.
No.
So...
It is.
Is it an option?
Yes.
But we have to get out of our other school district. I was called in a meeting here to be able to go into that school district. No? Okay, I'm sorry.
But your question about class sizes, as far as the other side, would be better directed to, Bill, as far as Townsend, the other elementary school.
Bill, do you have any comments about class sizes in Townsend?
I can only speak to class sizes in West River, and the average class size is 13.
Okay.
Yes?
So, I gotta step out for a second. Are we just, is there a list going of people to take comments?
I'm just like, yeah, just raise your hand if you have a comment.
Okay. Abigail Pelton. So, the last informational meeting we had had, I had asked, Bill, regarding a counselor for the kids. Clearly, this vote has stirred up a lot of emotion with families. Has there been any momentum as far as what that would look like to having someone to be able to speak with the kids, especially after the vote?
Does anybody on the board have any comments about counseling to that?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, that's something I've been really concerned about as well. I've been trying to really push for as much as possible. And when I asked about that position recently, I was told that the position had been pulled because nobody applied and they hadn't had an applicant. And I was told that I could go out on my own and try to find somebody, and so that's what I did. And potentially have a lead on somebody who is going to start hopefully in the next few weeks, coming at least one, if not two afternoons a week.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That is great. And I guess I'll wait because I'm looking forward to saying that. That was my question. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody on Zoom who has any comments that you have to discuss?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Full name. Please. Yes, please state your full name.
It's Adi May.
Yes.
And Hazel and Quinn May both go to Wyndham. And I just think that it would be important for these meetings to try and focus on not our kids that used to go to this school, but the ones that do and their futures and the kids that are potentially coming to this school. And really just focus on this school and not all of the other opportunities that we could have if we made different choices. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Adi. Is there any other, any other comments from the... Yes, Bill Casey.
What do you think? See, I've been here about a year. This is the third property we own in Vermont. We have a place to be, but a tenant is volatile. I have a family, two daughters. Wife and both daughters have bachelor's in education. Daughters have master's in education. I have familiar small schools, family moved into, had less than 100 students, pre-K to eighth grade. First year my older daughter went was okay. The second year, the other two girls ganged up on her and made her life miserable for the entire year. Stomach aches, don't want to go to school, etc. We took on our own, paid tuition to a friend at another school in the district, brought her there each day. She excelled, valedictorian, drama award, field hockey captain, etc. Banned, then onto high school. The other daughter thought about coming up here with me, with her three kids. She looked into school and said, "No. No, there's no opportunity here for my kids to have friends, etc. I'm not coming." Later, she hears that the new hire at Floodbrook, that superintendent and principal, didn't find this town because of the school. Homeschooling, I have met 10 or talked to people and know if 10 students did not come to this school, nine were homeschooled because they felt they had a better education at home. 10 was bullied and parents took that one out of this school and paid to send her to private school. I think this issue is not about taxes, it's not about the drive or the busing, it's not about a friend pleading to keep my school open. It's about the best quality education for the children of this town, period.
I'm sorry, can I respond to that?
Sure. Thank you, Bill.
Mr. Casey, you've been here for how long?
Excuse me?
You've been here for how long?
A year.
A year. I appreciate that. I've been here for, oh gosh, 19, and I bought a house in this town because of this school. Mr. PJ, has there been a, over the years, have there been issues of bullying in the school?
Again, not that I have been dealing with, no. We never had a formal bullying complaint. Because with any other school, you're going to have some students that certainly have their challenges, but that's never been a formal issue.
So, Mr. Casey, I appreciate that you've been here for a year, but please understand there have been many families here for much longer than that and families that have moved to this town because of this school. So, just myself as a former parent, my youngest is 16, I'm sorry, but I completely disagree with you.
Okay. I want to say a couple more things about me. I have three master's degrees. I ran a $400 million worldwide business. I am able to deduce things and understand things just talking to people here, listening to them, and hearing their stories. There was a person I could probably bring in who paid to have his daughter not in this school because she was bullied, period. Now, nobody answered me when I asked the board, how many more than 10 in the last 10 years were homeschooled? You should know that.
I didn't hear that's a question.
I'd like to make a comment.
Alexis had her hand up first, Kermit. Do you recognize Alexis?
Hi, my name is Alexis Malakowski. I'm sad to be here that that was your experience, but you can't take your experience at another school and just automatically apply it to this school because that is not the case. And you cannot base your entire judgment on small schools, on you having a crappy experience in one, because we've been here, this is our third year, and my son is doing amazing. He's friends with everybody, and he's six, oh, seven yesterday, and already doing fourth grade math. So, please don't tell us how our kids get educated because you've just admitted you do not know, he's only been here a year. Have you come in to do anything at the school?
I think you're talking, so I'm just listening.
I know, but I'm asking you. Have you come in to try and see how the school runs or how the kids are? Because it sounds like you're basing your decision on how your old school was and have not come here for yourself to see how this school is.
Do you have a drama club here? Do you have a soccer team? Do you have a field hockey team? Do you have a basketball team?
My son is six. He needs an education, not sports. He is doing great.
Education is more than just one book learning. I'm sorry. Education is a broad experience in one. I have friends, but I have been friendly with him since first grade still.
I brought them here. They moved here, pretty much school. They live right down the road.
Well, why didn't the gentleman from Floodbrook bring his kids here? He is an educator.
I can't stop this.
What's that?
Okay. Is there someone on Zoom who has some comments?
Betsy Huffman.
Betsy?
No, I don't have any comments.
Okay.
I do.
Okay.
Here's one that came here first.
Can I talk?
AD, who's asking if they can talk?
It's me, Adi.
Okay, Adi, I'm going to recognize Kermit because I want everybody to speak who hasn't spoken.
Sure.
So, Kermit?
The thought occurs to me that due to the fact that there are a few families that have been here for several generations, when Michael Pelton spoke a couple of meetings ago, I no longer felt like I really had anything to add. He and Abby brought really impartial, objective, factual information forward. And what really, it was positively reaffirming because one of the reasons that I moved to Vermont and I have invested in the state of Vermont and made sure that education institutions have, you know, received endowments, two of them in fact. I've participated and encouraged this Sustainable Development Foundation to invest about $50 million in two different academic institutions. One of the reasons that I chose to move here is because of the Vermonters' participation through town meetings, how the community works. There will always be a population of fairly transient folks who look at their investment in their house in terms of the financial benefit of selling it eventually. But there will always be a percentage of the population of a town in Vermont that people will continue to follow the traditions of Vermont, whole community, second only to family, and continue to participate in the tradition of participation. I feel very strongly, as I've articulated many times, that the school is almost a bad argument of whether it's good or not because that's completely a very subjective answer, clearly, for everybody here. There's none of the kids that are attending now here. And closing this school is very cynical because it locks out the potential for new versions of the school as more people in the community participate, as more people because of this facade, this misinformation campaign that was trying to cheat by saying our schools need an opportunity, vote yes. It's a complete con job. But so many people in the community, it pricked their ears out, and they want to be involved. But Michael and Abby, who have triplets here, and Michael's family, who have been here for generations, what they are saying is that the value of the school is very much undervalued because people who aren't particularly invested in the community are judging a school that hasn't had the level of participation that appears to be on, you know, it's growing. More people want to participate. More people want to hear people out, including those that have had problems with the school, to really hear people. But also, that we acknowledge that the community wants to participate and invest their time and energy and money into the school and want to improve it. That's what's most significant. You're not just talking about a school, you're talking about the very fiber of the community. What's more important? Those that are concerned with flipping their house are those that want to continue to participate in the tradition of Vermont, which is participation, stewardship, emotional intelligence, the ability to not be an anti-intellectual and to appreciate that some people are scared of learning or whatever. I shouldn't say scared, but have a distrust of science, have a distrust of progressive Vermonters are bigger than that. So, I just would like for people to acknowledge that the community that continues to participate in this thing called Vermont want to grow their school and really appreciate the honor of the work that's been done, especially given through this pandemic. Our schools stayed open. Our children were less scarred. When I say our, I don't have any children here, but I know children that go here and I love them dearly. And I know children that have attended here, many of them. And I love all those kids. And one of the reasons I love them is they're able to be human beings because they've learned how to interact with each other properly. They've learned how to be real friends, they've learned how to listen, they've learned how to do thinking skills. In this day and age with all the crazy things that are going on in the world, your children need anger. They need a small community to come home to. That's just what I have to say.
Kermit? Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to comment? Okay. Russ?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment following up on what Bill Casey said. I've been here since 1992, which is 39 years.
You're sitting home.
During that time...
You've lived here full-time since 1992?
I haven't lived here full-time. I've been in town, I've lived here in town since 1992. And I'm familiar with the community for 39 years, okay? I would also like people to stop making comments while I am speaking. If you want to make a comment after I'm through speaking, you can make a comment. But while other people in the room are speaking, let's not have banter between those individuals, please.
Just be accurate.
Okay. I know of three children who are the children of a person who was the principal of Floodbrook School that looked in property in Wyndham and said, "No way was he going to send his children here if he lived in Wyndham." I also know of a family on Old Cheney Road that has three kids that homeschooled them because they didn't want to have them in this school. I also know of a family that used to live at one end of Old Cheney Road that sold their house. They had a three-year-old kid, and they moved to Peru because they didn't want their child to go to school here. I know of another family who rented an apartment on Old Cheney Road who had a child who moved out of town when they were going to buy a house. They didn't want to buy a house in Wyndham because they didn't want their kid to go to school here. I know of a family on Chase Road that paid tuition for two of their kids to go to school outside of Wyndham. I know of another family that lives on Wyndham Hill Road who decided to homeschool their children for the same reason. I know of another family that was going to buy a house on 121 when they learned, it was right at the town line that the kids were going to have to go to school here, they decided not to buy. So, there are a lot of people that look at Wyndham, a lot of people that look at Wyndham that decide they don't want to have their kids come to Wyndham, to the school here in Wyndham. That's their prerogative. The problem with the budget here in Wyndham is we cannot reduce the price per student unless you get student enrollment up. If people are looking at property in Wyndham and have children and they decide not to buy, or they live here and move out of town so their kids don't have to come here, we're never going to get to 20, 25, or 30 students in this school and reduce our per-student cost below that excess spending level. What happens every year is Mickey gets a raise, health insurance goes up, building maintenance is deferred, things need to be paid for here that aren't being paid for. They don't get, they don't get a lunch, they don't have art classes, they don't have a nurse, they don't have a lot of things that they would get at other schools in the area at much less cost per student than what they get here. And I know that many people are upset. And I know that many people are upset. And I understand that you have a deep-seated desire to keep the school open. It would be nice if we could get thirty or thirty-five kids in here, if we could have another teacher. But it's not gonna happen. And two years ago, when we voted down the budget, we were gonna replace salary, okay? Eighty-five, ninety thousand dollars worth of salary. That didn't happen because the price is gonna be too high. So I asked Bill Anton, at what level do we need another teacher? This arrangement with Mickey and Sarah is temporary. So how long is temporary? When do we get five more students in and it comes up to twenty-one? Do we get another teacher? Add another ninety thousand to the budget? These are numbers that we need to look at long-term, not just for one year, but for two years and three years and say, if we have students increasing from sixteen to twenty-one to twenty-five or twenty-six, what's it gonna cost? And by doing that, then we have a fair comparison. But we don't have a fair comparison on the budgets that are prepared here because there are two different kinds of budgets. Under one budget with school choice, you get free lunch, you get a lot of other services and benefits in other communities. Here you don't get that because it's not included in the operational budget. Thank you.
Um, thank you. Just so everybody knows, I'm sorry. We should really introduce everybody. I should have said something. Bill Anton is our superintendent. Lori Garland is our chief financial officer. Obviously, Mickey Parker-Jennings is our teaching principal. Carolyn Partridge, board member, myself, Beth McDonald, Russ Cummings. Any budget questions, please, please, please ask Lori Garland. I need to put you on the spot, but that turned out and she's amazing. I've worked with her for years. Anyway, sorry, Mike, go ahead.
Is there somebody on Zoom?
Sarah?
Peddeman has a.
Okay, Sarah?
Hi, everyone. So I just wanted to respond real quick. I heard a lot of, I heard, I just recently heard about everyone who was looking to move out of the town because they didn't want their kid to go to the school. And I just want to respond with, David is the homeowner here. I live in Lethal, as most of you know. But I am actively looking to buy a house in Wyndham, which means there would be two houses worth of tax dollars going to the district for one kid, who, by the way, is homeschooled for her own personal choices, but is also very active in the school as much as she can. So I just want to say that there are folks who are making the choice to want to move to Wyndham. Thank you.
I'm Sally Eaton and I'm not a voter in Wyndham, but I taught here, I went to school, Wyndham School, and I taught here for twenty-four years. I just retired spring of two thousand twenty. And I think your taxes went down when I retired. But anyhow, there's a couple of things. I just wanted to respond to what Russ was saying about people that moved out, didn't want their kids here. I don't think it's fair to give that, those kinds of numbers without the explanation behind it. I know one particular family that I know that you're talking about. And the reason they told me that they were taking their kids out of school is because they didn't want them to have any homework and they wanted them to have opportunities to do things, excuse me, with the family, play hockey, do all this kind of stuff, and they didn't want to have as much academics to deal with. So there are a variety of reasons. There are people in town who have homeschooled their kids for religious reasons. It's not fair to say these are people that have pulled their kids out because they didn't like the school or, you know, that. So that's one thing I want to say. The other thing I just want to, you know, I've spent time in quite a few of the elementary schools in this area. I know teachers that teach in those schools. I've actually taught at New Fane and I taught at the Windholt School before it was the Mountain School. And they're all good schools. And they all have opportunities and they all have opportunities that are different. I just don't see that, I see that a small school like Wyndham has so many wonderful opportunities that larger schools don't. That I don't see how we can make this argument in terms of opportunity because, you know, when I think about as a teacher, the most important opportunities for kids are to feel safe, feel interested, motivated, comfortable in a setting, successful, excited about learning. And it doesn't have to be one particular kind of environment that's gonna give that to them. Probably most kids could do well in any of these schools. And, but what I see is that in a small school like Wyndham where you have multi-age classes, where a teacher has the same children for a couple of years, boy, you really get to know those kids. And when you have a small class, you have time to really spend quality time with each kid, to listen to each kid and to find out what their interests are, what their fears are, what they, what their strengths are, what their, their learning needs are, where they need more help. And I feel as a teacher, having taught in a variety of schools, including in Anchorage, Alaska, where the school was almost two hundred students, that for those things that in elementary school, those are really essential things. Giving those kids individual attention, building a community where kids are accepted. And in a little school like this, it's so wonderful the way the kids work and play and learn from each other. And the older kids teach younger kids. They can't play kickball unless they teach younger kids how to play because there's not enough players. And you say, you know, kids go, don't have enough friends to go to. But in a sense, if kids have a limited group of peers to play with, they learn to problem solve and get along with those kids. They're not gonna run off. And yes, maybe there is bullying that happens sometimes, but you have, in a small school like this, you have influence. You can come in and talk to the teachers. You can work with them if your child is having an issue. I'm not saying that won't happen at Flubrook as well, but I think that the idea of closing this school down and labeling it as an opportunity issue, it just doesn't make sense. It probably has a lot more to do with the financial piece of it. However, I think that education is one of the most important things you can be spending money on. And having your own school here, I, we had Chinese in the school for a while. There was a Chinese teacher. She now teaches at Little and Gray. She was here for quite a few years. There, if you want something to happen in this school, come and make it happen. There are resources. I mean, we have, there's so many wonderful resources around. So don't close this school because there are a lot of families and a lot of kids that want this school open for their kids. And if you close this school, this is, this town's gonna be an empty ship.
Who's her name again?
Sally Eaton.
Who?
Nina T. W. K. O.
Right. Meredith?
My name is Hannah Fiskley and we live on one twenty-one. Our seven-year-old is in the other room and he goes to the Mountain School at Windholt. Just to give context and backstory. And I guess the things that I've been building up, things I wanted to say is sort of, one thing is I just wish, I certainly hope we never have another one of these meetings because, sweet Jesus. But if we ever do, I really, I wish there could just be a moratorium on talking about how long anyone's generations of family have lived here. Like, I always feel like the sort of subtle, not-so-subtle dig in that is like, and if you're from away, oh, well, then like, do you get more votes if you're from here? If your people are from here? Like, I just always feel like that feels like a little bit of a canard, like, oh, and? Like, I pay taxes. I'm sorry I wasn't born here. I apologize, but I feel like I have a right to say. The other thing is, I wish honestly, truly, truly, from the bottom of my heart, I wish that everybody could have exactly what they want. I wish the people who wanted to send their kids to school here could just do it and it wouldn't have to have anything to do with me. And honestly, I would have just, you know, been, whatever. I'll just, I'll tuition the kid in, that's fine. But they asked and so I voted and so I show up occasionally with these things. And I just feel like, what kills me about this is the people who are happy, I'm glad they're happy. The people, those of us who aren't happy, who don't want a one-room schoolhouse for our children in the twenty-first century, I feel like we get sort of vilified for that if people do say, well, here's why. Here's people who didn't want to do it. Like, every, no, 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 you're wrong. That's not it. That's not what that was. It's not opportunity. It's not, it's not school choice. It's school closure. Okay, it's school closure. Like, I feel like there's nothing that anybody who doesn't want to send their kids here, who doesn't want to keep the school open can say that ever gets like heard. Like, oh, man, yeah, okay, I got you. It always just feels like, nope, either you're wrong or you're an asshole because you're not from here or like, whatever. And it's just like, but I truly wish that the people who wanted their kids to go here could just, I wish everybody could get what they wanted. And, you know, it makes me sad that it's not like that. But again, if it's coming up for discussion, then I feel like, I, the other, the other wish I have that's just as unrealistic is that only people with school-age children get to vote. Like, that would feel truly fair to me. Because that's the other thing, is the number of people who are like ready to step up and tell you how amazing the school is, whose kids are grown or who don't have any kids who live in the area, like, that's great. I'm glad you feel it. You don't have a kid school age who's here right now. Like, I'm not that interested in what you have to say about it because I'm in this situation now here. So those are my, that's my wish list. No more mentions of how long anybody's been from here. Everybody gets what they want and only the school people get to vote, which I know I don't get any, but I just thought I'd tell you how.
Meredith, can I just make a clarification?
Sure.
Um, the school vote is, I wish everybody had their choice, but this school vote, Meredith, involves closing the school.
That's fine. I have a machine.
So, no, I'm sorry, Meredith, just let me, but you're saying you wish everybody had their choice. I do too, but this, that's not what we're talking about.
Right, it's not.
Meredith, just hold on a second. It's not. And it's scaring people who.
Yes, yes, everybody feels bad. Everybody feels bad. This is making everybody feel bad.
I guess, I'm sorry, Meredith. My point being, the vote had been to have true school choice. Perhaps it, okay, so I just wanted to make that clarification. This school choice is not, it's school closure or some.
You always say that as if it's this like, nobody ever bought it. Yes, I know, that's fine. I don't care. Like, it's school choice, closure, whatever. It's the same thing.
I guess my point is there's people in town that they do care about that. Secondly, as far as not having children in the school, believe me, I agree with you. I think there's a lot of people basing their vote on the school who have had absolutely no participation, who have, in fact, raised their children elsewhere. New York, New Jersey, Connecticut, wherever. They chose to raise their children where they wanted. But somehow, they come here and decide how their other parents should be raising their children. That's unfortunate. So that's just another point I wanted to make. And as far as people discussing how long they've been here, I was merely pointing out that I moved here. I bought a house here. I'm not from here. I'm from South Jersey. But I bought a house here to put my children in school. So people talking about how long they've been here, I think maybe it's just a matter of what brought them to Wyndham. That's just it.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
I'm gonna just come here so Zoom can hear me because I'm not a very loud speaker. I also would think by now I wouldn't be so nervous doing these things, but this is terrifying once again.
Can you state your name?
Bridget Corby. So I just want to come up and say, kind of echoing a few different sentiments that, you know, folks have had. To start, I'll say that I came into this really skeptical and not sure about the school. I signed the petition. I put the sign out, all of those things. And I'm more than happy to say that my son is thriving in the school and I didn't anticipate that. And a lot of things that I was nervous about with a small school, you know, the socialization, you know, what, the depth of his education. I mean, kindergarten, he just started. He's so excited about learning. That small classroom, I mean, he is, his attention tends to be all over the place and he gets that from me. And that, I think, is hard when you have a young child and you're sending him to school for the first time. And the thing Sarah has done for him has been fabulous. And being in a room with nine kids, he, she can adjust his learning and he is, you know, kind of doing above and beyond what I thought this quickly into the school year. And I think that that's really important to acknowledge because we're all coming into these preconceived notions. I'm really not skeptical about the farm program. I guess I just didn't really get it, but we did it and it's been great for him because, again, he's a wiggly kid and preschool, kindergarten is a pretty big change of life. And so now he's in the grind five days a week and Thursdays are farm days and it gets us out the door on it, you know, when we're starting to crash for the week. So I think the reason why I'm telling everyone this is because I think it's important, I didn't realize how contentious certain relationships in this town were when we all started this and I didn't realize that I never heard about the wind turbines and now volvers and the wind turbine issue and how it's affected our town. My, everything that I've done this, you know, the past few months has been with what's best for my kids. I've got Jackson kindergarten. I've got another one coming up in two years. And the conversation's gotten super far away with what's good for my kids and I think that's concerning. And so, you know, as I'm telling everybody what I, what I was surprised about, I just really, really hope that the folks on the other side of the argument can do the same. To Meredith's point, if you disagree, it has not been met well. And it's not, it's not, oh, yes, I hear what you're saying. Let's, let's work on that. Oh, you know, that's a great point. I understand that. There's been a lot of, you're wrong, the school is great. You know, things like that. And I think that we are not the first group of people to come in and have a concern with the size of the school, with the budget, with the, with how the school looks, the maintenance that's needed, the, how large the teaching staff is. I think it's super important for the town to really look at with this vote, we talked about choice, we talked about closure. It's really, it is about the identity of the town and where do we want to go from here? So if, if we choose to keep the school, then what's the plan? Like, I like a plan. I like to know what's, you know, happening next. One of my fears is that the vote is gonna go the other way, which that's not my fear. My fear is that the side that wins is gonna say, great, we won, that's it. We can't do this for another year. I think that this is like, kind of like a rock the bottom moment, I think, for the town of Wyndham and I think there has to be some growth from this. If, you know, whichever, whichever way we land, I just really hope people are making that decision based off of what they really think is best for our kids and not who they like in town or who they dislike in town or, you know, all of those things. You know, there's a lot of questions and myself, other parents have sent in a lot of questions for Lori about the budget and what the implications to the town is. I think those are really more things that we should be talking about because if, if the school does stay open, we need to really know where we're going. I think one of the, one of the reasons why I'm really lucky is the kindergarten class this year is kind of big for Wyndham. It's, is it eight kids or seven? Eight. So nine kids in that classroom. That doubled our class size and I think that that's pretty cool for my oldest. I want to know what's going on with my second. You know, where, how many kids are coming in with his class? What does that look like? Are we gonna be able to hire Sarah as a full-time teacher and alleviate some of the administrative work? I mean, she emailed, I mean, other parents can tell you. She emails us at ten o'clock at night on Sundays and she's doing so much extra stuff. And I think that those are, those are really important conversations that we need to have about the future of our town, of our school. You know, where Russ talked about it and other parents talked about it, that concept of families are moving out. You know, Sally's right. If we don't have concrete, the why? I can tell you my personal, my personal experience. When we bought our house, I was like eight months pregnant with, with my youngest and my husband had been working up here for months. And, you know, I was in Massachusetts, he was here. And we looked all over and real estate and rise, an experience on its own. And so we bought the house in Wyndham and we really didn't know. And we were in the process of closing the house and my husband sent you a coworker when we were going to Wyndham and the person he worked with said, you cannot move to that town. They have a crazy small school and the town is crazy and you can't move there. And he called me in an absolute panic and we already cut it off for the house. So here we are, four years later. And I think that's really, really important for everybody to acknowledge here on Zoom. And people that didn't tune in, I think Wyndham has a reputation. And so whether or not we can't nail it down, this person definitely moved because of this or this person didn't move because of this, I think we need. or this person didn't move because of this, I think we need to actually acknowledge that we do have a reputation outside of our town of, of, you know, being a little bit contentious. I, you know, mentioned to my hairdresser the wind issue, and she's like, oh, yeah, that was crazy. And now we've got the school issue, and people outside of this town talk about how, you know, the dynamics. And really, we just all aired our dirty laundry in about 20 different Brown Road reformer articles in the past few months. I think that there's like a lot of repair that needs to be done.
Yes.
Along with all of this. So, I just, I really, really urge everyone to have an honest conversation with a parent on both sides of the coin. Understand how they feel. I urge everyone to ask questions about the budget and what that means, because if the school does have a future, we do need to bring more kids in, we do need to attract more families, because, you know, as Rex pointed out, that does help our tax rate. And, you know, I think that we all want our kids to be in the best situation. If it is the school, we need to invest in it. And I think those are, those are real concerns, and I just, I just really hope that the folks that feel the school is, is meant to be here, it's meant to be a part of the community. I just really urge you to hear the other side, because if you don't, we're never, we're never gonna grow from there, and this conversation is gonna continue to be contentious, and, and that's not good for anybody's kids. So, thank you.
Michael?
Michael Pelton? Unmute yourself, Michael.
You guys have three kids.
All right, Meredith, if you can allow, I have limited access, could I pontificate for a few minutes? I may go over my five-minute part.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. So up the road, there's a building, one of the first that our community's built in, or taught it. Where citizens would gather, that business of the town, gather prayer on Saturday. This building no longer provides a moral compass that we're used to. In 1802, it would have taught us that we should treat each other with respect and dignity. Our founders would have taught us that the community's school is a source of vibrancy in the community and of our republic. It would have taught us that our schools are a place where we can guide our children to be good citizens. We can combat oppression and provide a path towards prosperity. It would have taught us that being responsible for our actions is important, and that the family and community are vital, 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 rather, for moral person, uh, personal development. 1777, education of our children was so important that the Independent Republic of Vermont, in its first constitution, guaranteed the convenient construction of youth. This led to a complete education system, including a university in our state, which was an independent republic until 1791. A decade ago, I found my better half, Abigail, together, we found that we made a much better home. We chose to return to Wyndham to ensure that we had a place for our family, that our children could have a quality education in a small school, where they would have small intimate classes as mine had here in Wyndham. High years ago, we were blessed with three children. This certainly changed our outlook on life. I found with the help of COVID, that I was missing out on what I've worked so hard to enjoy. I found that I must spend more time enjoying my family and town to ensure my own personal fulfillment, and to ensure and shape our children for their future. I encourage you to reflect as I have on your life. Are you satisfied? Are you happy with your legacy? How do you want your town to remember you? How do you want your family to remember you? Personally, closing the school will adversely affect our children and our family. We'll likely have no choice but to homeschool our children. We'll not consider allowing them to be bused for up to two hours, nor would we, would we be able to drive back and forth to a school, such as towns in our floodglove, for instance. Our children have shown us that a small intimate classroom provides them with the education that they require. Our autistic daughter would not bribe a large school, as she has in Wyndham. Proponents of the school closure have indicated that a larger school would provide better outcomes for those with special needs, as some schools may have full-time parent educators, et cetera. This is a deceitful argument. Should a child in Wyndham require service, services, they are provided here as they are in any other school as required by law. In addition, Wyndham provides a student-to-teacher ratio that has been proven to provide positive outcomes. Financially, we as a family are not prepared to shoulder the increased burden that the school closure would force upon us. We know that the school may struggle financially until the state changes the way that we fund it. This state is looking at these changes, and that's right around the corner. We're likely to see a significant difference in the manner that the state provides funds to us as a school in our favor due to our role nature. This partnered with community support and innovation can pave the path for a brighter future for our school. Certainly, our school's enrollment looks optimistic for the next several years with more students coming in. Let's use this time to encourage our school and build our community in a positive way. Academic research shows us that closings and consolidations drastically change rural communities. The closure of the school in rural communities have negative effects financially as well as socially. When towns have closed schools, the town must work exceedingly hard to foster cohesiveness. Open schools naturally foster more socially interconnected communities. Closing our schools is not cost-effective for our community. Nationwide, it goes to decrease property values, decrease personal income, and decrease community potential and resilience. Socialization and community and income inequalities, rather, are further widened by school closures. Small schools do suffer from funding issues, but generally provide better educational outcomes by offering environments that larger schools simply cannot. This includes better student-to-teacher ratios, ensuring that our students get the support and the education that they actually need. If a board member or citizen identifies better opportunities in other towns, we must look to fostering these options in our town. Many of these programs are provided by the community, so let's stop focusing on closing our school and put this effort to building a better school and by providing these programs. We're not providing opportunity to our town if we close the school. We're simply trying to offload these responsibilities to another town or district. The cost of the building remains unless we sell the building. The town still picks up the cost, even if the school closes and transfers ownership with the town as a whole. We know that busing looks more expensive, no matter how we do it, unless we choose not to provide these services and force parents to transfer their own children to school. While this takes the cost away from our town's purse, it certainly adds these challenges to the parents and further impacts our communities' families financially. Do you believe that this is what our founders had in mind in 1777? Huh, the answer is no. The answer to this debate is simply keeping the school open and foster greater communication, and transmit transparency and collaboration. Using the terms "choice" and "opportunity" during this debate is simply misleading. Children will not have school choice with closing the school. The town's vote on Article II removes the ability of the board to pay for an independent private school. We do not have guarantees that a public school that we are limited to will have capacity. Siblings may be forced to attend different schools, as schools do not even consider households when considering capacity. We do know that we will have to travel further and endure increased financial burden for transport as parents and/or as taxpayers should be closed the school. The option of choice without closing schools is currently being investigated by our supervisory unit. If the plan moves forward and with increased innovation and promotion, we might actually be able to stabilize our student population levels and provide choice for it now. Is this, this is the fight. Those who want to change, or want change in general, should be fighting for choice and not for closure. Closing of our school decreases the control of Wyndham taxpayers to influence our school's budget and other aspects of the school. As a voting taxpayer, we can go to the school board, we can voice our opinion about financial and educational choices that they make. With the closing of the school, we lose this influence. How can we, as a responsible community, support this loss of local control? We, as citizens, must work together with our civil servants, boards, to ensure sound financial footing and to provide opportunities that other towns do benefit from. We must, as the citizens of our town, are required to ensure a high degree of education for our children, and also retain the value of our property and of our town, and retain the control of how our taxes are spent, and retain the cohesiveness of our town. Please vote no to retain your rights and opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Bridget?
Oh, hi, Bridget Blanchard. So I, for Michael, I don't, two hours on the bus, I don't really know how that would be possible to get to Townsend. I was just thinking about it. Right now, my daughter's the last one off the bus, and she's on the bus for an hour. And that, that went up about half an hour from me from last year. But one other thing that I was thinking of is, well, my daughter's doing really well in school. I have to think about my son and my other son, and I think he's the only kid going into kindergarten next year. And so I want everyone to think about, when you graduated elementary school, how many of you graduated by yourself? So that's it. And I think it's a legitimate concern, but I might just be crazy for thinking that.
Can I go up to Diane?
Yeah, I see it, thanks. Diane on Zoom? Can you please state your last name?
Did I respond to that?
Uh, no, we're gonna recognize Diane.
Well, maybe he can respond to it after.
Yep, I'll recognize you later, Michael. Diane, are you there? You can unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. What's your last name, Diane?
I'm, I'm Dionne.
Oh, sorry, Dionne.
Oh, that's okay, I don't know how that works. So, two, I think, basically two points. My kids did go to Wyndham Elementary, and they've had a good experience. And they have done well. And I have, for the past 21 years, been the youth educator at Hill D, and we work with 40 schools. And I really get the difference, or I really see the difference between small-scale and engaged, committed staff. That's not a criticism to other schools at all, but it's just like, we have this in Wyndham. We have a committed, engaged, caring staff. That should be considered a treasure. They're not, you know, they're not, they're not, you know, tucked under the rug. They're not, they don't slip, they don't slip through the cracks. And that can make all the difference in a child's life, what goes on these years. Second point is, closing the school really closes the opportunity for what, what might happen in the future. Like, things are changing in this world. And with, we've seen what's going on in the Northeast, in Vermont in particular, with folks coming in, you know, we, you know, having a little school here could be a really, you know, could really, is a good thing for our community. And could be like the best thing that a community could have. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dionne.
Michael wants to respond.
Yeah, Michael, do you want to respond to prior comment?
Um, well, the reality is that we do have small classes. And we're not wrong to say we have one kindergarten come in next year. However, it should be noted that our kindergartners and first graders are in the same classroom. So it's not like the kid's gonna be, our children are gonna be in a classroom all by themselves, alone. They're still gonna have interactions with other children. They're still gonna learn, perhaps even learn faster, because they're being exposed to things that other kids in more advanced classes are being exposed to. As far as bus trips are concerned, our bus run takes one hour to complete. So if you take that and you add possible transfer from one bus to another at the bottom of the hill, whichever direction you end up going, you're looking at a potential wait at the bottom of the hill, and, because lord knows, things don't ever line up correctly. And then you're also looking at from that location to wherever the school happens to be. So you're adding 15 to 20 minutes. If you add a pickup here, or pickup there, you're adding even more time. So you're looking at, literally, an hour and a half for the kid that's the last person on the bus in this town. You're looking at an hour and a half, two hours for a bus trip. I don't think that's feasible for most children, let alone adults, that's a long bus trip. I don't see how we can look at that as a possibility in our town to, to force our kids to do. It just seems like a large, large amount of time. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Ron, I'm a grandparent in school. And I do appreciate, Russ, your, your look at money, because I'm not a money guy. And I've taught at several little schools over the last 35 years. And I guess I want to speak in support of what Ken does happen at little schools. Michael's point about the multi-age classroom was my thought about kindergarten, you know, and I, but I do respect that, that's a real concern. I lost a job 20 years ago because I was at a little school where people had that kind of feeling of, ooh, not enough seventh, eighth years, not enough socialization. And I really respect that, that position. And I'm really, these are sad stories about kids who are picked on. I have a process issue that I was using the word bullying, which is a legal term, and I don't, I think Mickey was saying that we have not been bullied in the process here. So conflicts happen at all schools. And, like, I'm, I'm meant to come to school now, and we have kids who, you know, who feel picked on, and we process it. And I know that's happened here with our granddaughter, with our conflicts with kids. And I feel like there's a great level of confidence for that. And I, but I am sad to hear about the harder cases. And I'm asking the parking lot, and I haven't really, you know, and I'm not blaming anybody like that. I don't have a lot of detail, and I'm not blaming people for not telling me, but all I know is, our granddaughter's been here, this is her fourth year, and when I hear about troubles, they get addressed, even without a council on board. So that skill set that Mickey and Sarah bring is really huge. I had a couple of other thoughts. Just a process question, I don't know if you were the one to answer. We have a lot of papers, are we gonna look at those, or are we just gonna expect to read those? I mean, really, like, are we supposed to read them and ask questions? Because I maxed out on time, but reading them right now, I'm gonna come up with smart questions. So, I guess, I could, I'm not a money guy, but, you know, maybe I'll look and follow you with a question. So people are kind of laughing, so these are not gonna actually get addressed unless we turn them off. Is that, if that's a process, I'm okay with that.
Can Zoom have access to these documents?
We have a chat, good. We just sent them out to, we, sorry. Sorry, they just, we sent the questions out to, they went out through Sarah Wunderley for the school. We sent them out to Ellen McDuffie, but they have not been, I don't know if they have a policy to not send those. So unfortunately, the copies we have are here.
Okay. Can we provide PDF to people?
Just to be clear, I'm not asking that we do that necessarily. You know, like, it's a huge, and I just like that these are thoughtful comments and questions, and I just wonder, if we're left then to be adults on our own, figure like, how this influences our vote, that could make sense to me. I just wondered why, you know, what the process is.
Michael, just so you know, we have people who've asked the questions, Bridget Corby's here, Michael Pelton is on Zoom, Frank Seary is not here, and the other, Aaron Kehoe is not here. So, I don't know if to start with people.
And those are the, those are the questions.
Those are the four that I saw, that I put out.
Yes, you don't.
Yeah, to kind of answer your process, the board just wanted to have full transparency. Anytime that they receive specific questions, they're going to the AOE, myself, Lori, they directed us to make sure that we had it all transparent and had copies. So there was no need to ask any questions, they're all questions and answers, facts and truth. It's just a commitment by the board to full transparency.
Yeah, I also, I wasn't quite done, I'd like to continue. I also wanted to say just how much I appreciate the working board. I'm on a board, I've been on a couple, and it's really hard, especially when you give them money. So I really value the difficulty of this, of this kind of work. But I really do, I find it interesting, and I respect your opinion, because as I say, I lost an interesting job when people maxed out that idea that small was good. And, you know, for, for me, you know, this is, our granddaughter is here and she's echoing the Tucker thing down the road. It's like, please don't close my school. I love it here. And there are a lot of kids with, with that sentiment and I, I agree with those who said, I don't doubt that Floodbrook and these other neighboring schools are really doing wonderful work. But, you know, like the last letter that went out had this kind of, not a tone, but a statement that continue to run a substandard school, budget this and that. And that's just not fair. Bill Anton's here. He's the superintendent. I haven't heard Bill say it's substandard. And so that's, you know, just not, it's, it's an opinion and I, I respect that people don't want one round, one-room schoolhouse, but there are a lot of people who do and value what a small school can bring and the gift of multi-age classrooms. You can't have that everywhere. And, you know, and I agree with the woman over there. It's tucked in. You have your wish list. You can't all get what you want. But we do have a beautiful little school here and if we vote no, then we can keep it. Thank you.
Ron, what's your last name?
My last name is Boslin, B-O-S-L-I-N-N-A, not a winner. But I am a parent.
Thank you, Mr. Metz.
Thank you.
Gail?
Well, I may botch this up, but I just wanna, I worked here for 10, 11, 12 years, whatever. Loved it. And I just want to say, Bridget, Erica Van Alstine was the only sixth grader and to graduate. And she said, I'm the only one. She had to write her speech. It probably took her six weeks. She needed to practice spelling and make it sound good and thank so many people, whatever. And years ago, they decided that the kids that graduated, the class, whether it be six, eight, or whatever, they weren't gonna have their class day in Vermont. They would go to New York City. They'd see the Empire State Building. They would go someplace, but they wouldn't be in Vermont. Erica went. They took, they left at six in the morning and they went to Rutland and they flew to where?
We flew to Boston.
Yes. I remember sitting in front of the TV that night. When they were coming back, they went to a tornado. On the way down, Erica threw up in the bag, right? When they came back, he and Sharon threw up in the bag and Erica had the time of her life. She went to Boston on America. She had a great time. I mean, it's a small school, but they do fun things. And they won't ever forget their sixth grade trips to the, oh, Sharon, you're gonna call me. It's great.
Okay. Bridget, I saw your hand first.
No, I think this is like a perfect example of kind of what, what I was trying to say is if I were to choose, I would be having mild panic attack if my child was going in as an old kid. I mean, that's just to be totally honest. I think Jackson's having a great experience since he was 27. And if not, I, you know, I've met Bridget's son. I have no doubt he is gonna like hang with, you know, other kids totally fine. But to me, I look down the road and when you are the sixth grader graduating and heading down the Leaning Gray and you're doing it by yourself. And, and so while everyone, everyone else is confident towards Bridget, that's okay that he's by himself. I think it misses the mark and it misses the conversation that we need to have. How do you attract more families to Wyndham when we constantly have this debate over the future of the school? Because if we don't attract more families to Wyndham, we're gonna continue to have these struggles. To have one kindergartner enter the school is, is pretty scary. And I, you know, I think of my second, you know, I've seen that one of the questions was projections over the next few years. And you see that, it does say there's two. I'm assuming one of them is mine because it's based off of the January 1st deadline. But I would, I'm gonna send him to Miller York Quick Pay. So we're kind of guessing there's one going in. But I look at my second, he's a little shy. He's probably gonna come in and have a great time because he's already been hanging out with all these kids here. But I sent him to preschool and he's nervous. To think of sending a kindergartner in with no other kindergartners, it doesn't mean that they're not gonna get an education here. It doesn't mean that Mickey and Sarah aren't gonna do a great job fostering, you know, what, what they need in elementary school. But that's a real concern that parents have. And I think that the, while it's all well-meaning, hearing things like, but this person did this and this person did this, it's fine. I think it really misses the mark is why are we still talking about the future of the school? There needs to be, we need to hear Bridget's concerns and say, that makes sense. And what, what can we do to bring more families in? And if you don't put, if we don't put more money into the school and you don't support the school as a community, that's not gonna happen. If you continue to like have this like figuring, so the outside world is going crazy, which is like I said, that experience that I had, we're gonna continue to have this happen. And I think those, I think that's exactly my point. I think there are real concerns that families have and we need to hear them and, and try to come up with some sort of plan so that we have a steady flow. I mean, I have no, I have, I do not think in any way this school can be a hundred kids school, nor do I, nor do I need not. I, I don't think that that's, I don't think we need to have this like packed in school. But I think that there needs to be a real conversation about how you sustain the school over a long period of time when we just don't have a strong young population here.
I'm gonna recognize that again.
Thank you. So, back to middle. I asked a question on the school working regarding, um, oh my gosh, mom brain. Really, right now? I know, it's three times ready. What did I ask you? Yes, thank you, Bridget. So fundraising. Has fundraising or donations be used towards budget items for the school?
Uh, so that question has been asked of the attorney and the answer's not come out.
The answer's not come out, okay. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna stand up here because it's not starting from like 2017, six, or 17, 17, six, positive. God, these things are hard to read, though. I want people to kind of reflect and think about for a minute. When you receive feedback, you do work that sometimes you're not required to do and you do something. If the feedback that you receive is negative or demeaning, do you want to keep doing that work?
No.
No.
Quite frankly.
And looking at and, and kind of touching basically what a lot of people have said here and what Bridget had just mentioned, how our town is marketed right now is awful. Absolutely awful. We are shown in such a negative light, largely due to our community interactions and how we, we deal with simple questions and feedback. It's okay to acknowledge and, and, and address negative behaviors, but it's not okay to not let people be heard. To not let people say what they need to say, especially for those that are involved. So thank you, Bridget, for highlighting that because you are right. That is a very valid concern for a parent to have. Now, to touch on what your, your wife had mentioned, Mike, I deal with that with my husband all the time. You got the, you know, he's got family that's been here forever. I bring a perspective to him and say, honey, nobody gets that. People don't know this. Just because you've been here, you understand these things, doesn't mean somebody that's coming out of, you know, blue is gonna have a clue as to what's going on. People need to be able to talk. People need to be able to be heard. That's not happening. So what are we gonna do to change that? We need to develop a plan. We have tons of parents, active parents, who want to do stuff and we can't tell this vote's over. We have plans for soccer. We've had tons of ideas of things we want to do and we can't go anywhere right now because we're waiting on this vote. Regardless of how the vote turns out, that's still gonna happen. I was very blessed to be, have my kids be invited to Tucker's birthday party this weekend. And it was awesome. There's pretty much almost every kid from the school was at the party. Watching them play and having a great time and the parents talking and getting along and it was beautiful. It was absolutely beautiful. One of the things that I noticed, I don't know if everybody can see my little purple ribbon that I'm wearing. Zoom land, there you go. Uh, this is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So this is gonna sound kind of weird, but through being Domestic Violence Awareness Month, I have been to many trainings and seminars talking about the impact of domestic violence on our communities. And the one thing that I, I noticed at this birthday party, that every single little girl that is in this school is gorgeous. We have a beautiful school, absolutely beautiful kids going to this school. And a recent seminar that I attended really made me reflect on parents of little girls. What's, how is that, how are these kids gonna be adjusting to this world that we're going into? You know, we've all been through this pandemic in fight or flight mode. That's how we're operating. That is how people are reacting to things. It's, you know, putting your dooms up because this is what I'm gonna do. This is what I have to do. We're, we're transitioning out of that. We need to listen to one another. And are these little girls gonna grow up in an environment where they're being accepted and encouraged to be an astronaut or a scientist? Or are they gonna be looked at as going, well, you're beautiful? I, I hope it's not that because there's more to them than that. In comparing a larger school versus this school that's been hit, talked about by many different people, yeah, there's different, different experiences for everybody. In a larger school, as a parent, I'm glad I can get here and stand up. And this is a much smaller group of people than if it was a larger school. I know what, what I say, what other people say can impact in my community. So what are we gonna do for the kids? How are we going to mold that? And, and, and is that still an option if you go to a bigger school? You talk about bullying. Do you think that doesn't happen in parent-teacher groups? You think that you come in and you're not a person from the town, that you're not gonna get excluded because you're not one of the locals? If we see it here, it happens everywhere. We have the ability to make change and to, to really make this school an amazing place, make this town an amazing place. There are so many big ideas. School fairs, sports events, raising money for who knows what. Hopefully we can give it to the school. We'll get the answer. I know we will, but I just want people to think about that when they're voting. And when they're reacting to what they see and hear in town. Are you gonna be a good human and mob behavior for your kids to show, you know what, we can get through this? Or are we just gonna keep tossing carrots? Thank you. Oh, and I have, I mentioned in the school meeting last time about Dr. Doors. I have right outside this hallway some stuff I randomly printed off. So if anybody's interested in getting any information and for those of you in Zoom land, reach out. You can send michael.herbert.pelton@gmail.com. I'll get it to you. Thank you.
Emily Boyer. And I just want us all to take a moment to think about size. Because I'm hearing a lot about class sizes. And I've heard that 10 to 20 students per grade is considered a small class. And that's every school in Vermont because they're recognized, they're larger than that. So this school is microscopic in size. But I, I, I hear about, oh, we're worried about our kids slipping through the cracks. Well, in a class of 10 or 20, I really don't think that can happen. So just recognize that this is, that this is an exceptionally small school. Keep it in your head.
Dan, please, Dan.
Emily Boyer.
Thanks.
Joyce Cumming. I'd just like to follow up on Bridget and Emily's points about the need to attract more families and the idea of small, small class sizes in small schools. I organized a meeting last year. Out of state for 20 years, we would always try to keep K through 2 below 15 or 20 if possible. Sometimes it meant a last-minute struggle to find another teacher that wasn't budgeted for. But we would do that because that's important, K through 2. 3, 4, 5, the elementary school was only ran K through 5. 6 through 8 was middle school. 9 through 12 was high school. So, um, 3 through 5, we could handle class sizes of 20 to 23. That was considered acceptable. I think in support of small class sizes and even small schools, but an entire school of less than 20, I don't see how it's viable. Following up on Bridget's point in terms of how to attract more families to Wyndham. During the pandemic, people were moving up here in droves. I have seen very few families with children moving into Wyndham. Because the school is so small, any change leads to a major impact on the school. Whether new students come in, students leave, students leave, then taxes go up. Students come in, there's a need to hire another teacher. So it's, it's, other schools in the area are better positioned to absorb a loss for a gain of new students. I don't see where Wyndham can really do that. I don't see how it's gonna happen. I agree that increased, following up on Kermit's point. I agree that increased participation among the town is a different. Um, but increased participation at meetings doesn't equate to an increase in school enrollment. And, um, I have a couple of questions for Bill and for Lori. In terms of the current situation being a temporary fix, the NLPJ and terror, at what point does it become mandatory? On what enrollment level do we need to hire another teacher? Because I don't see us looking forward, you know, beyond this year. Everyone's focused on this year because the school may not exist beyond this year. So everyone's focused on this, but I think we need to look further forward. If, if, if students come in and the students who are here now, who are grade 3, move on to 4, 5, and 6, we're gonna need another teacher at some point. You yourself say, I believe that it was a temporary fix. So I'd like to know at what enrollment number or when do we anticipate that? And then the other thing is in terms of budgeting issues. Carolyn, I understand, has been asking people to vote no based on the anticipated increase in taxes of 14 cents per 100. If the school, if a non-operational school, which is not about school choice, a non-operational school were approved. But those numbers were based on the budget assumptions that the supervisory unit prepared. That didn't include a school lunch or school breakfast program. It didn't include funding for some of the deferred maintenance. Now, Juan said that a letter referred to it as substandard. I don't, I, I didn't read anything as substandard. I understood it to mean maintenance that's been deferred. So I don't want to put more work either on Lori or Bill, but I would like to see, you know, this meeting is supposed to be about fact, not fiction. And so people have been promoting vote no for this reason, vote yes for that reason. Well, if the vote no reason is because taxes are gonna go up, I'd like to see a budget that has, you know, several options, like option A, as the school is, which is the budget we already said, the budget assumptions. And option B, let's, let's, if the parents want school meals, factor in what would it cost for a school breakfast and a school lunch program? The deferred maintenance issues. Let's factor in another option, what would it cost to address some of the issues that were cited in a report in terms of needing to address? You know, um, people say participation and volunteering and we can do whatever we want to. Okay, volunteering is great. I volunteer. I've always have. But, um, at one point, when, when the volunteer is no longer interested, do we need to pay someone for the services a volunteer was providing? And I think we need to keep that in mind in terms of the overall cost. Yes, volunteering Yes, volunteering is a great idea for making, you know, ends meet. But it, it won't necessarily always be there. So that's all I have.
Thank you. I'll start.
Okay.
I, I believe that when we discussed the current structure in Wyndham School, I used to call it pilot because it was the first time that we had done that. And after November 2nd, the board will make a decision based on whatever happens with this vote and will build out a budget for the next year. So just on the idea of me saying it was temporary, I'm pretty sure I used the word pilot. But either way, it's, we've never done it before. And so I wanted to make sure that the board and anybody who was participating knew that it was a new thing that we were doing. Um, in terms of enrollment numbers, needing another teacher, there are no hard and fast rules in Vermont in terms of class sizes. There are guidelines. K through three is 18 per grade. And four, five and six is up to 24 per grade. Um, but you could have 20 kids in a kindergarten class. So there, that would again be a decision that the board would make to have whatever kind of staffing they'd want with input from their administration. But there isn't a number that you hit that you would have to hire somebody. Um, in terms of the budget comparison, we were asked to take what Wyndham is currently doing and take all of those facts and move it over to a non-operational budget. There were thousands of what ifs that you brought up, really good points. And so what we did is tried to capture those and put them at the end of the packet that's over there that says, for example, if you do a reserve fund for unknown students that come in, this is what you would have to decide on your own to add to the budget. If you wanted a food program, you would have to decide whether to add that to your budget. He knew that there was no way in the world that we could create 100 different budgets that would reflect what you care about and what you care about and what you care about. So to be completely transparent, we just took exactly what was happening in Wyndham today. And then we moved over all those things into a non-operational. And then we recorded all the possibilities that one individual could add. So if I'm an individual who says, I want to keep the school open, but I want a lunch program. I'm going to fight for that. Then you need to look at that anticipated tax rate and you need to add 27 cents or whatever that, that number is. But we, nine cents. We can't, we can't do that a thousand times. We, we thought about it, we discussed it, we, we just can't. So we needed to be as transparent as possible. I think those are my three.
Yeah, I'm happy to talk through the considerations. It's really a menu, right? I mean, these are the things that people were asking for. So they were put on the list of options that could be added to the base tax rate, right? So I'm happy to go through that page. Does everybody have that budget in front of them? Let's just talk right through it now and then it puts that.
The last read.
Lori, could you show the front page of that document?
If you don't have it, I'll be, there should be some on the back table.
The documents of assumptions for the summary?
I have to leave. Can I just respond or report? Would you mind?
Sure, go ahead.
So with, um, I'm sorry, what is your name again? Joyce, Joyce, thank you. So when you had a question about parents and saying we can do whatever, you know, we want, it's a very valid question. What I know many of the current families that are having kids in the school right now are very motivated to do, should the school be open, depending on the vote, is to develop a plan so that incoming families already know roles that need to be filled and things that need to be done. There's a lot of really good, positive things that have been discussed, but cannot be implemented until a vote is done. So that's, just want to put that in. Thank you very much. Good night.
Okay, so Lori is talking about is the assumptions and summary for budget comparison analysis.
Right, so the, yes, the last page is the considerations that were asked for and we provided. Um, the, the food program would cost an additional nine cents. So at the top of the page, you see base TR to compare with. Okay, so that is the budget as it is now with some assumptions that are on the front. And that would be the tax rate. Okay, so now if you wanted to add a food service, it would cost nine more cents on your tax rate. If you wanted to, um, you know, we were talking about deferred maintenance. The, uh, the tank, the oil tank needs to be replaced. So we looked at that and we said, okay, we could replace it in one year, three years or five years. What would that cost in addition to be, that would be on the tax rate, right? Adding a point five, um, admin assistant so that Sarah could be a full-time teacher. That would add six cents to the budget, to the tax rate, sorry. Half a day at art, three cents. Half a day at nurse, three cents. So all of those things added up. Um, and I chose the one in the middle, replacing the tank in three years, would add $119,000 to the current budget as is with some assumptions, which would create a tax rate of $2.20. And that's 39 cents above the base. So those were figured in. And then on the flip side, we did the same thing. So we added additional cents as we talked about tonight. There are homeschool students that may decide if there is, um, a non-operational district to tuition their students. So we assume that we'll probably have five of those come out. So that's built right into the, baked in the cake is what we like to say, right? So that adds 27 cents to that budget, to that tax rate. Um, and then adding a tuition reserve of five adds another 27 cents. Um, and adding additional transportation adds another five cents. So adding all those things up adds an additional $174,000 to the base tax rate or base budget.
But to emphasize, all of those decisions will be made by this board on November 3rd on. These are, these are just trying to reflect what we have heard the community interested in. What would it be if we invested in tax?
Part of, I think, the condition is the idea that, um, our operational budget is being compared to another school, as if we were non-operational, which would include some of these things. It would include a school lunch program. It would include some of these things that are going to cost us more to keep the school operational. And so we're looking at comparison that we're looking at is really not apples to apples.
I, I don't disagree with your characterization of that. I'm just saying we were asked not to look into the future, but to do exactly what existed because otherwise then we're putting our opinion versus what currently exists. But I totally agree with you. If you want to look at that and go, if my child or a child of Wyndham went to another school that had a food program and I wanted it to be equal, in my mind, I'd add nine cents. I agree. But we, we couldn't do that for every single semester.
So then, um, I would close with one final comment. I would simply ask the school board members to think forward. Think forward in terms of these extensions and what it's going to cost ultimately to keep the school operational.
Karen. So I prepared a little, um, some thoughts and I, I hope I get in under the five minutes. And, and some of the things that I prepared, Joyce, actually sort of address some of your questions. And I, I want to say upfront, I really appreciate the conversation we've been having tonight. I really appreciate the civility that we've been, we've been approaching this with. I will say that in some of the past meetings, it's been, it's created some PTSD in me and it has not been pleasant. And so I, I really appreciate everyone's effort to be civil. So as you know, I've been pretty clear about the fact that I oppose closing the school. And it's not just because of the 14 cents. Um, there are many reasons why I oppose closing the school. And I've, I've sketched them out here. So our children in the school are doing fantastically. They're doing well. They are happy. And if there are problems, they get addressed. And they get the social emotional care that they need here at this school. Mickey's trained in it. And, and I can't say enough about how fortunate we are to have our teaching team of Mickey Parker Jennings. I don't want to make you cry. Uh, and Sarah Wonderland. We are really fortunate to have these people teaching here. They are fantastic. They give our kids excellent care and an excellent education. And, uh, thank you, thank you, thank you. I'll also say the Wyndham kids are way ahead of the game. Last year, while other schools were shut down due to COVID-19, all of our students were attending school full-time. What is that worth? What are we hearing about all across the country about kids who have missed school and what an impact that's happening, that's having on them? Uh, and now with the Delta variants that we're looking at coming our way potentially, who knows what's going to happen? I'm thankful that they are now okaying vaccines for our kids, our young kids. My grandchildren are going to get vaccinated as soon as possible. I am really thankful for that. But I think this is a really terrible time to close the school. As it is one of the few schools in the area that kept its doors open full-time during the pandemic. Now I want to take a look back and talk about the ADHOC committee, which was formed a few years ago. And at that time, the main focus was the tax rate. And the conversation has shifted slightly. But I think it should be noted that our tax rate is, and you know, this is a snapshot. It can change. I get that. Uh, but our tax rate is currently the second lowest in the supervisory union. We asked, we've been talking about the, um, the document that Lori prepared and thank you Lori for that. We asked her to generate that analysis that compares the budget for an operational and tax rate for an operational school versus a non-operational scenario. Uh, and I have been talking to people and I have been saying that based on current conditions, uh, we've determined that the tax rate for an operational school would be $1.81 per hundred. Whereas if we close the school, our tax rate would be $1.95 per hundred. So there's the 14 cent difference. And to be fair, we've just talked about the various à la carte options that we could do. To be fair, if we decide to provide a meal program, that $1.81 could go up. Uh, and, and if we do a non-operational school, that could go up as well. I mean, when you see the comparison here for the à la carte, it's 220 versus 232 for non-operational. If we want to provide extra transportation, things like that. And also that reserve fund is, is a pretty important thing because I know that the experience in Stratton, Windhoek has been very difficult. In fact, we changed the law several years ago to accommodate their situation with a whole bunch of people moving into town, way extra students than they, they budgeted for. So at the same time, there's a conversation happening in the State House regarding the waiting study. And we've talked about this a little bit. Um, the waiting study, uh, the waiting task force was tasked with looking at how, how we have as a, um, as a rural, low population density town been short-changed since the inception of Act 16. And it's my hope, and I will be pushing hard, I don't know how it's going to end up, but it's my hope that we will pass a bill this year that will compensate Wyndham and other towns that have not had the resources we deserve and get that done. And, and so that, um, rather than be valued at one, uh, we might be valued at two. I've even heard we might be valued at three. I find that hard to believe, but you never know. It would be nice. So the most recent focus of, it seems, of people wanting to close a school is opportunity. And I'm sorry that Mr. Casey left because, um, this gave me the opportu, gave me the opportunity to put on paper all of the opportunities that Wyndham kids have that other schools don't offer. And I drove, I think we were really, I think we were really nuts trying to get it all down on paper and I probably missed some of the stuff. Uh, it went out in a letter that I sent out to a lot of folks and by email. And I have, you know, like 13 wonderful opportunities that the kids here get. Uh, and I'd go through it, but I'd really be over my five minutes. I won't.
I just quickly, I can't, you're good, I can hear you. Can you please stop giving your pen all the time? That's all I can do.
Yeah, it's for you, you know.
Please, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. Can you hear me now?
No, I can hear you. I'll, I can hear your, your pen all the time.
Okay, all right. Thanks. So, um, I, I won't go through them all, but there are a lot of opportunities. And, you know, when we're thinking about sending our kids other places, some of those opportunities that they offer, like, you know, well, we know there isn't a chess or a painting club. There never was a dance club at Floodbrook. But, um, those opportunities were provided by parents and or teachers who volunteered their time. It was not something that was baked into their cake of having these clubs. So, so we can have those things. If we want, if somebody knows how to play chess really well, it would be great to have a chess club. If there are people in town who are artists, if you want to do painting. Sally, as part of class, actually does ukulele lessons. She does nature club. We thank her for her volunteering. But anybody is welcome to volunteer and share your talents here at this school. It doesn't always have to have a price tag on it. And at Floodbrook, just for instance, it doesn't. It's volunteer effort that makes a lot of these things that, that we value happening. So there are also, I've been hearing comments about the condition of the building. And are there things that need to be improved? Yes, sure. But that is true of every other school building in the state of Vermont. It's not just us. There has been a moratorium on school construction aid for construction and improvements for too many years. I don't even.
2007.
2000 what?
Seven.
Seven, 2007, 14 years. We've had a moratorium. Why? Because the state got way overextended on construction aid. And we weren't able to, I mean, we just weren't able to pay it. And, um, it's wrong. I agree. And I, you know, hopefully we'll reinstate that. But the good news is that there is currently a statewide assessment of school buildings being done. Um, I think the AOE is in charge of it, Agency of Education, but they're subcontracting it out. And my hope and belief is that there are going to be funds available to help schools pay for these improvements in the relatively near future. Um, because every school, uh, and we have, we aren't as bad as some others. Look at Burlington High School. Look what's going on there. We have, you know, everybody's deferred maintenance because of this, um, non-availability of state aid. Uh, we are also aware that there's a discussion about allowing interest, supervisory union, elementary school choice. And I don't know how far, you know, that's gotten along and, um, you can comment.
Oh, yeah, it's, it has been introduced to the WCSU board and they will be discussing it this fall.
What I find interesting about that is that, that folks who want to send their kids down to Townsend could potentially do that. Folks who want to send their kids to Floodbrook would not, would be out of luck better. But we are also aware of, of families that want to send their kids up the hill. So it could be a nice balance. We wouldn't lose ADM's, uh, average daily membership as a result of that because Bill's setting it up like the high school model, which is really good. And, um, that would allow families who love Wyndham to leave their, you know, have their kids in Wyndham. But others could make choices at the other schools, um, in the supervisory union, well, in our district. I think it's an intriguing idea and I'm hoping that, you know, maybe that can work out. That would be great. That would be great. So for all of these reasons, and probably several more that I haven't even thought about, I think that Wyndham's school should stay open. And with all of the wonderful energy and interest that has been shown by parents of young children, I think we can make Wyndham even better than it already is. My kids attended here. They did great. You know, my oldest son got a degree from Retsfield Polytechnic Institute. He's an electrical engineer, works up in South Burlington. My middle son, who spoke at our meeting, and unfortunately that was not recorded, but who spoke on the 28th of August, is a veterinarian. He went to Cornell and the University of Pennsylvania. And my youngest son Ben went to St. Lawrence University. And he now has a full-time year-round job at Bochemo. And so, and I'm just going to say that Ben graduated Wyndham a year before Mickey got here. And I would say that if anything, this school has gotten nothing but better since Mickey has been here and Sally, you know, and Sally too. So for those of you who worry about the quality of education here, I think you don't have to worry. I think it's good. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. I'd like to recognize Crystal. You've got your hand up on the Zoom.
Thank you, this is Crystal Corvio. I just want to kind of address, you know, there's been a lot of personal attacks on people who want closure. And things, you know, some of the things that have been said are just awful. And I can tell you for me personally, like, maybe not so much Jackson, and I can talk about him because I own him. You know, he's pretty consistent. But my other little guy is not so consistent. You know, when I met with Bill about meeting with Mickey and Sarah and sending the boys to Wyndham because staying in Townsend wasn't an option, Oliver was having a lot of problems. He was a pre-K kid. And I will say, that pre-K experience was absolutely horrible. Because it was. But then we just thought, we found out that Oliver had some problems we weren't aware of. And he now takes some medicine that helps him. So had he have been on medicine for pre-K, would it have been better? It may have. You know, but when I say it was awful, it was awful. But, you know, me wanting my boys to go to Townsend, like, I'm not going to face that one experience that Oliver had because he's constantly changing. You know, right now, we're faced with a little bit of a problem that he's having some issues. And I'm struggling with the small staff, not because they're not wonderful. They are wonderful. Like, you know, I wish I could add Mickey into Oliver's plan and Oliver could just take Mickey everywhere he went. But, you know, it's hard for me because one of Oliver's problems is that, you know, when a problem comes up, I can't really have Mickey deal with it. Not that he couldn't deal with it. I know he could. You know, Bill's assured me of his training. But if Mickey were to deal with it, it would change Oliver's whole outlook on Mickey and create like bigger problems for him. So, you know, currently I'm in a situation where I bring him home. So, you know, we're talking about things that need to be added. You know, I think we need to look at what's it going to look like when we add a second teacher? Do we need to add a special educator? These are things I want to know about. Like, I have a child that is going to need this stuff. And, you know, my concern is, are these things not going to be addressed? Because it'll put us into a penalty bracket with the amount of kids we have? You know, these are issues that I'm having currently. Thank you.
Thanks, Crystal. Do you, does anybody want to respond to Crystal?
I think it'd be inappropriate to speak about an individual student.
Okay. I'd like to recognize Dionne on Zoom.
Yes, I'd like to respond if we might.
Hello.
I'd like to recognize, oh, Pete, yeah.
Dionne on Zoom. And I wanted to say that I definitely support keeping the school open. Public school, I feel like, has been an experiment in Vermont and the nation and Wyndham for a couple hundred years, and it's always been a mixed bag. But I really feel like taking care of our own is a really good way to build community. And I think you have a dedicated staff and board and community, and that's really the best you can do. You can, you can have perceived, you can perceive that things are going to somehow go better because you feel a more urban scale or a bigger scale would be better. But again, that's so subjective. And what you need is a place where the kids can, the kids can be comfortable and get adjusted and get grounded. I went to this school, my kids went there, they did really well. Jenny's in RN, Jesse is an energy analyst. They went to University of Vermont and they went to Bowdoin. And we feel like it was like, while they were there, we had the utmost concern that they were getting a good education, that they were, that they were getting the best they could. And I really respect, everybody, and every parent wants that. And every parent needs to feel like they're getting the best deal for their child. But I think that sending the little kids down to New Vane, I mean, I went to school with all these kids from New Vane. And it really is a mixed bag. And so you take your blessings. We have a tradition, hundreds of years of educating kids in this town. And I think you take it and take it forward and maximize it. And like Dionne said, I really feel like that the world is going to be coming for the Northeast, or at least America is. We're on fire here, we're flooding, we're in, we got crazy crime. And people are going to come here. And there's going to be plenty of people who like small schools. There'll all be, there always will be people who don't trust it. But I think, I guess that's what I want to say. The, I think if we go forward, I think in 10 years, and that's not a, that's not a recourse for somebody right now who thinks they're getting a bum deal for their child. But I think everybody should consider that, that the school is really important in Wyndham. And I think that there's a big, there's a group of people who want to shut it down because they think somehow their taxes are going to go down. And I personally, whenever, when I ever feel grumbly about my taxes, I always go, well, at least I'm spending, a lot of it's going to schools and education. That's where I would like to spend my money. So I don't want to grumble about that. So thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Sue, you had your head up?
Has the school board, when is the school board going to work on the next budget? I'm assuming sometime after the vote? Because we'd have, either way, there would be a budget that would be worked on. So Lori, have you guys, has the school board talked about anything that they'd like to see on it? If the school stays open or if it is closed? Is that something you guys have just internally talked about?
Oh, gosh, I think we're just trying to...
Yep, no, no, I mean, until it...
But hearing everything, yes, absolutely. I would love to hear. It's not what the school works, what you want. And you want, and you want, that's what we want to hear.
To take input from the community.
Yes, for sure.
And put a budget together before, so I'm assuming you'd be working on that right after the vote? And then that's what's voted on in March, correct? Okay.
Doesn't the timeline indicate that we're going to start working on the budget on November 16th at that meeting?
Right. That's typically when I have a first draft presented. And then changes are made and, you know, the board reviews it. And this is, I usually come out with a projected tax rate based on, again, some assumptions because we don't have all the numbers from the state yet.
Okay.
But that's usually what happens. And then I go back and make adjustments. And we continue the process until about January where they have to vote on a budget so that it can be worn for county.
Okay. And so that would be the, it's an operational budget, non-operational?
Same thing.
Same idea, okay.
And those meetings are, just like any meeting, we love participation.
Russell.
To address part of your question, Bridgette. To get a fair comparison between an operational and a non-operational budget, you would have to add the $27,500 for food service, which would be nine cents to the budget. And to fix all the Vermont School Board insurance trust inspection issues, you'd have to add 11 cents. That would be a total of 20 cents. And then to bring it in line with the services that would be available to a non-operational school, you'd have to add six cents for the administrative assistant, half hour there or half person. You'd have to add three cents for art, nurse, and foreign language, which would be 15 cents. So that would bring the operational school budget to $2.15.6. And you would compare that with the non-operational budget, which would be the $2.32. So the non-operational budget would be more expensive, but it has built into it a reserve for the anticipation that additional students would come into the school district between the time the school budget was adopted and the school year began the following September for doing that next full 12-month cycle. And that's part of the process of trying to anticipate a non-operational budget is, historically, it has been that students are attracted to town. And what happens is, if we get more students, the average daily membership goes up and the tax rate can theoretically go down. But it takes a year or two for the process to be recognized with students sitting in the seats and the actual average daily membership being there. And if I'm wrong, you know, Lori or...
No.
But it's an issue...
And I also laid it out on the...
So like the ghosted students, if they didn't move here, it would adjust over time?
Well, so that money would be raised and then it would just go into a surplus from, it would be able to be controlled.
The reason you need to designate the fund as a surplus is, if it isn't designated as a surplus for a specific purpose, I think the statute says it goes to reduce the tax rate. So what you need to do is when you're making the budget for a non-operational school is you have to understand the whole picture and what's going to happen over one, two, or three years. In anticipation of that activity occurring, you have to raise money in advance so you have it to pay the expense before it occurs. Which is not happening, hasn't happened because we have $32,700 worth of deferred maintenance on the building because they wanted to keep the budget down. Now I understand, you know, wanting to keep the taxes down. But there's also a point of making a fair comparison between a non-operational and an operational school. And in my view, $2.15.6 would be the operational school with all the issues fixed that needed to be fixed to make it fairly comparable with a non-operational school where they had their art, they had their music, they had the cooperative in wherever it is, the school programs and all the other stuff that would be comparable to what we want to pay for in an operational school.
Can I ask one follow-up question? So the, for Lori, you had kind of explained how this was all laid out. And you talked about the tank. Was that the boiler that's here or is that something else?
That was the oil tank that needed, that was the most pressing disturbance that needed to happen.
And that, but isn't that happening this year?
It may, it may have to happen this year.
Okay, got you. All right, I just want to try and understand that.
The other thing is to recognize there's 41,000 of surplus, audited surplus from a year ago and anticipated 40,000 surplus from the fiscal year that just ended. So there's $80,000 worth of surplus funds. Some of those surplus funds could be used to address some of the issues that are in here under the operational budget if the school board wanted to discuss them. But they have so far preferred not doing that. We spent the 28th and the 24th, you know, shouting at each other and we never really got to talking about the budget.
I was going to say, you're on the school board.
Well, I mean, it was three, I sat here for three and a half hours, one week after surgery. And all they did was tell how great the school was. We never talked about the budget. Now on the 28th, we did the same thing. Three and a half hours, I sat here, we never talked about the budget. All we did is say how wonderful the school was. And the idea is we want to talk about the budget in comparison. Thank you.
Go ahead, Carolyn.
So the 28th was an informational meeting, just like this one is. It was not to discuss the budget. That could have been part of the discussion. But it was to talk about the ballot issue, Article 1 and 2. That was what that was about. If people wanted to talk about the budget, you were fine to do that. But you had to bring it up, it had to be talked about. Unfortunately, you guys weren't here for that, right?
No. Yeah, it did on Saturday.
And it wasn't reported anyway.
I just want to make sure that you did make a motion, the board did make a motion to pay off the deficit loan with some of the, basically overspent this year's budget, which then eats into the surplus. So I wanted to, you know, make sure everybody understands that. So both of the budgets that I presented here assume that that debt is gone. So, but there is some additional reserve money that, or it's not reserve, it's surplus at this point. And the way that it moves into a reserve is also through an article on the ballot that will happen. Any surpluses, it's a general article that we, most districts have, that any surplus be moved into either an operational reserve fund or a building reserve fund. For a time, there was, Wyndham was putting money into a bus fund on a regular basis.
So going into whatever budget, we, not operational or non-operational, will go into a known debt and a surplus that will be put somewhere?
Could be used for deferred maintenance or it could be used for the, to build up a reserve for tuition students.
Or could be used as a reserve for the bus or a building maintenance and grounds reserve or whatever prudent business planning would be reflected.
Is there a time when you use your surplus?
Once it's in a reserve fund, it's, you can use it as you need to.
May I clarify? What, so Lori, at this point, what is in the surplus? How much do we have in surplus?
So you've basically got about $60,000 after we paid off...
Yes.
After we paid off the loan. So, and this year is tracking, of course, it'll be, it will look overspent this year because we paid the loan off. But it's also tracking pretty close to budget right now.
But 40 is not unaudited?
All of this is unaudited until, you know, we get our audits back. But we should have them, it promised me by the end of November. Let's see.
Carolyn?
Yeah, something that came to mind, a couple of things. One, there was, to answer towards the, you know, the sort of snobbery of people that have been here for several generations, I think that what we have to acknowledge, and I fully recognize that not every family that's been here for generations wants to keep the school. that not every family that's been here for generations wants to keep the school. I'm very clear about that. I understand that's not the case. However, for those families that do, we also have to acknowledge that their families are growing. Those that live here all have children that have attended colleges and other places and are home, like Michael, who have children in the school. There is a tradition here, clearly. The school's been open for quite some time. Looking at the United States' economy, the reality of the pandemic, regardless of whether you believe in it or not, economies are crashing in every city. There is the WRCP, and also a new thing that the, that Dutton is going to be doing, a farm cooperative that is going to be donating food to the school. The reason that that's possible is because sustainable agriculture has been reintroduced to the community with a vengeance by a very philanthropic family who has invested literally millions of dollars into Wyndham. They alone are providing a great amount of, of opportunities that have not existed here. They are here, they're not going anywhere. And these local families that are living here that are, are continuing generation after generation, I'm specifically thinking of the Duttons, but there are others, they are in the agricultural business. The local food movement is growing. We all discovered that there's a real supply and demand issue because there's food insecurity when you have a pandemic. Local food is what everyone was depending on during the survival isolation period. Unfortunately, not enough people stayed with buying locally. So those farms weren't able to invest enough to grow enough to keep up with the demand. But in these intervening months and the developments of Delta and wars brewing, more people are deciding to move home, more people are making decisions that they would like to be in a community that they have some activity in, that they can participate in, that their children can be close to home in, with the least exposure to anything, be that white supremacism, or, you know, whatever is going on out there, disease. So we have to acknowledge that local families that have chosen to stay here are growing families. And we don't necessarily just need new people to move in from new places. And those that do, we might have to assume, are just as likely, if they choose to have children, to look at the school as something that's, that's a great thing. And for those folks that move here that are already retired, it should be sort of a new point, unless they're willing to invest in the time of, of the school. So just to quickly reiterate, hoping that the town of Wyndham will be more attractive to people to immigrate to, while that's a, a wonderful cause, it's also pretty disrespectful to the people who have been surviving here for hundreds of years. That's, it's so disrespectful to move into a foreign country and decide that your way of life, your suburbia, your point of view, your worldview, is somehow more valid. But you chose to come and move here and live here. I really do hope that they vote to allow students to go to whatever school they want within their school district. That does make common sense, which includes other children can come to this school. But we owe something to all the families that are buried here in the cemetery. We owe something. This is the center of the community. This isn't about taxes and whether or not it's a good school or not. This is about the, the shape of our, of our whole community. This is an effort to sort of lodge community and participation into sort of a periphery. Because people from suburbia, unfortunately, have been largely brought up to see community as a sort of platitude. It's not a thing. It's me and mine and my mortgage and my financial realities to survive here in this expensive place, pay exorbitant amounts of food, to buy a Costco, to not participate in making the country great by utilizing its natural resources in a sustainable manner. In Vermont, we're all participating, whether we like it or not, in a growingly inclusive democracy, in a place where we are growing populations and people in every town and city that are growing up to the idea that we can evolve just by buying locally. That's how we can contribute to improving society and the American economy in the whole, is to invest in its farms. And so people that are, that are from here are going to benefit by keeping their school here. People that decide to immigrate here, or, you know, move here from various places, they would benefit from education and living in a small town and really participating in the community with the respect for the hundreds of years that the town has existed, and the importance, the significance that it has always placed on educating its youngest citizens. That is the crux of the issue, in my opinion.
Does she hang over there?
Yeah, my name is Pat McLean.
Oh.
I'm a resident of Wyndham, parent, grandparent of a child living in Wyndham. I'd like to first say that I think people need to really understand that all of us in the room here who have been coming not only to this meeting, but to other meetings are here because we care about the children, we care about their preparation to participate actively in this community and in this world that we live in. We need people who are ready, active, engaged. Secondly, I think we need to acknowledge that reasonable people have different perspectives and different opinions. And we need to listen, and we need to try and understand their perspectives and their point of view of what is of concern to them. Not everyone who is here in the school has everything going their way. And that seems to be misunderstood. I want to raise my concern about the lack of reserves in, for the school, and particularly the lack of reserves for major repairs and replacement of basic systems of this school building. This would include the furnace, the roof, the plumbing, the electrical. We don't have reserve funds that I'm aware of. We have very small reserve fund for the bus, which should be replaced by, I believe, is around $75,000. So the, the inspection that took place this last spring that identified a number of items that were efficient is already going to be costing quite a bit of money, but that doesn't touch these other systems in the building. So we need to be aware that there are costs to maintaining a school of this size that haven't been planned for and are likely to be larger as time goes on. And so when we think about the costs, I think we need to really be thinking about reserve funds so that these other expenses can be covered without huge costs coming up on an annual basis. So that's my, that is a fiscal concern, and I would like people to really think about that because these things, if, if we don't think about them, if we don't put money into reserves, the costs are just going to come up and surprise us, and we'll have very large taxes to pay. But this has to be part of the planning for what goes on here. And when we look at costs, this is something that is missing from the current budget.
Carol?
Well, Pat, I think you make some very good points, and I think I actually spoke to some of those when I, I made my presentation. Every school in the state has deferred maintenance, probably because of Act 60. And as I said, there's a statewide assessment that's going on. What I don't think I, I followed through and said was, it is our hope that there's going to be some money there, whether it's pandemic relief money, you know, infrastructure bill, money, that there's going to be some money there to help schools address these problems. So I'm hopeful about that. But you make a really good point that, you know, these things need to be looked at. I'm hopeful that we will get some kind of money to, just as the town got 45,000 or whatever Wyndham got, that Wyndham School will get some piece of change that we can help pay for some of these things without driving tax rates up higher.
Russ?
Yeah, I'd like Bill and Lori to address the change in the special education allocations to the district based upon recent changes in the law, and that how special education two years ago cost us $63,000 that we had to finance over a three-year period of time. And that, I think, if I understand it correctly, the, the grant money coming for special education to the district is going to be based upon average daily membership. And the ratio of what would come to Wyndham would be the average daily membership of Wyndham in the numerator and the average daily membership of the entire district in the denominator. And if there are 1,000 students in the district and we represent 16 out of that 1,000, then we're going to get 1.6% of the special education money for Wyndham's district. Is that the way it works? And is there a way in which that can be ameliorated or adjusted by having a special education reserve fund so we don't get a hit at some point in the future?
So just, I'll, I'll, I'll do the broadest stretch of all, I'm not really going to do it. You're going to get less, everybody's going to get less money. The law was passed, Act 173. You no longer get reimbursed for special education costs. You get a set amount based on FY '19, '20, and '21. And it is a formula, and it increases by NIA. NIPA, which is essentially New England inflation. So it, it will cost the entire state farm because less money will be going. Specifically, either left wing or Detroit.
Right. So Wyndham Central is where special education is out of. And recently, well, within the last two years, a committee was formed, and we, they, the methodology of how the costs were allocated was changed, and it's a shared system now. So to your point, Wyndham gets a certain amount of that census grant. That's not really accurate. The money goes into the total pot, and then it is, it basically starts out with, you know, $7 million of costs for special education in Wyndham Central. And then that census grant is subtracted, as well as other grants that we put towards that. And then that, the rest of it becomes the local cost, which is split up. Where your ADM is coming in is how the cost is allocated to Wyndham, which is the, the 2%, basically. So, so that's how special education works in Wyndham Central. It is a shared cost system. What you were referring to about the hit that Wyndham had that caused the deficit was the early childhood special education. And that actually does not fall under Act 173. That funding is, is, remains the same as it did before. How Wyndham Central's, the board's methodology has been that there are a certain amount of shared costs, and then if a student comes in to a district that may need a one-to-one or specialized services, that cost is billed directly to the district. That's where Wyndham came into some costs that were unanticipated and caused a deficit. Coming up tomorrow night, the ECS budget methodology will be presented and, and talked about. Russ brought it up to the WCSU board to make all of the costs a shared cost system. And so I prepared, you know, two budgets, basically to show, here's how districts would be affected if a student moved in that needed a one-to-one, and it was what I call direct bill to that district. And then here is a budget where all of those costs go into a pot, and it is, again, divided up by the ADM allocation. So the board will, hopefully, they'll have discussion, maybe make a decision. I'm not sure if that will happen or not tomorrow night.
So on a redirect, it would be prudent then for an operational or a non-operational school, based upon the change in the formula, to have a reserve for special education costs over and above what might otherwise be covered. It would be prudent to have a reserve fund to meet those unexpected expenses by building it up over a period of time, maybe 10,000, 20, 30,000 a year?
Well, I, I can see where you would come at it from that angle. What happens is, is that at the end of the year, after all of the costs have been accounted for and all of the revenues have been accounted for, we find out, did the special ed budget have a surplus or did it have a deficit, right? So that's where you're talking about potentially having a reserve, is if the, if the total pot of money had a deficit, that deficit would be split up again by ADM. And, and so that's what you're talking about. The last two years, the special education budget has had a surplus and which the WCSU board has voted to keep in, instead of sending it back to the district. So that's, again, what could happen, is it could be sent back. Instead, they voted to keep it within WCSU. So, so basically, we're building a reserve at WCSU for those years where it might go into a deficit.
Thanks, Lori. I'm going to recognize Michael Pelton.
I know he's had a stand-up. I just have a really direct follow-up. Lori, in terms of prepaid special ed, the early childhood?
Yes.
I do have a bill in the House, H143, that would require that early childhood special ed be treated the same as K through 12. However, if it doesn't pass, I'm not particularly hopeful. Are there still, there's, are there the same categories still available so that if you have spending, I think it's $60,000, over $60,000, there is like catastrophic help for that?
Extraordinary cost.
Extraordinary cost, yeah.
Ninety-five percent reimbursement.
Yeah, the, it's, the funding has changed for it, but the, there is still the mechanism for that as well.
Yeah, yeah.
For both K through 12 and the ECS.
Okay, thanks.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I, I know you've recognized Michael Pelton. I don't have the ability to raise my hand, and I just have a quick question. So if you could put me in the queue, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, yep, go ahead. Michael, do you have the floor?
Hi, it's Ashley Abigail. How's everybody doing? I'm back. Awesome. So I wanted to respond to Crystal's comment earlier, and to let any family know, if at any point in time they have issues with addressing the district about plans for their child because of special needs, let us know. We are very well aware of how that process goes and can navigate that quite smoothly. So don't hesitate to reach out. And. And the next piece is I just want everybody to to dream big with me here for a moment. Okay? If you all wouldn't mind closing your eyes, we're going to take three deep breaths in through your nose and out through your mouth. Okay? In through your nose, out through your mouth, in through your nose, out through your mouth, in through your nose, out through your mouth. Now I want everyone to imagine that the vote happens and then families are able to get together and start making some really positive change for our community. We're able to create events and all sorts of funds, money that we can put towards really awesome things for our children and our community. We we start making people come uphill to us. They come here and go, holy crow, this place is amazing. And they want to come here to meet our community, to see our kids excel. Did I say which side of the vote that went on? If people can start working together, we can do amazing things as a community. Budget, bill, talk to your guy, your gal, whoever your attorney is, please, I would love to have that information about contributions. There is motivation. We have it. We've got this for whatever the outcome is, we're going to pull together as a community. It's going to happen. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful night.
Thanks, Abigail. Maureen?
Thank you. Just a quick question and it's funny that that Abigail just just said that. Is there a maximum student capacity in the school?
So years ago, I saw plans for the building and it said that the maximum capacity, you're going to laugh, was 70, 35 per classroom. That's not realistic. So but so.
Thanks for the answer.
I don't know if there is some some guidelines from the WCSU, but.
Yeah, the fire marshal.
A couple of quick things. One is it's really exciting to see that there are parents that are excited about doing stuff at the school and fundraising and making things happen because that's that's what makes a great school and a great community. And I remember several, quite a few years ago, we had a parent who raised a bunch of money and bought cross-country skis. We have cross-country skis, enough cross-country skis for every kid and all the staff in the school so we can go out and ski anytime we want. I mean, those are the kinds of things that contributions that parents can make and it's just it's really neat to hear that and to think that, you know, people want to close the school down when this is the energy that we have here is is hard to understand. I also just want to mention one other thing, and that is that I I taught in Wyndham for a long time, but I also taught in other schools, and Wyndham was the place where we took field trips all over the place and all we were always out going to places. Now this year, with COVID and everything, that would have been shut down and, you know, they're still doing little trips here and there, but the opportunities that kids get here are just really wonderful. And then the last thing that I wanted to say is that this year and last year too, I'm on a study list, so I can come into the school. I think it's really unfortunate right now, COVID, that people that don't really know what happens in the school can't come in and visit because nobody's allowed in schools these days besides people that, you know, that have to be here. But I'm really lucky because I come once or sometimes twice a week. I come and I teach music, it's not just ukulele, it started out just as ukulele, but I do music classes with the kids so that kids are given music and I come up and do outdoor ed with the kids as well. But every time I come, I'm just so impressed with the way it feels here. You know, the kids are happy, they're learning, Mickey and Sarah are doing a wonderful job. And I just think there's so much potential here, especially with the energy coming from the parents, that it's just it's a great time to build on what we have here, not not lose it.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any other comments? Board members, any last word?
Mike, I want to thank you for doing such a great job.
Yeah, really.
Thank you so much.
Phil?
You're the man, Mike. I got nothing, man. It's 8:40. I'll set that slide.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no objection, I'll ask for a motion to close the meeting.
Concluded.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. We need to hear.
Just a reminder, this will be up on BCTV. Today's Tuesday, Friday, my guest, and I will share with the board if they can get it out really well. But you can go to BCTV.com.